This meeting to order, the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. Rob, can I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Member Moberly?
Here.
Member O'Brien is absent. Member Murphy?
Here.
Member Lee?
Here.
Member Podliska?
Here.
Chairman Neiman?
Here.
And Vice Chair Giltner?
Here.
Here.
So should I make, I want to make a motion to appoint Vice Chair Giltner as Chair Pro Tem or President Pro Tem for this evening only, July 19th. I don't want to go to your head.
Second? A roll call, please.
Member Moberly?
Yes.
Uh, Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Podliska?
Yes.
Chairman Neiman?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Giltner?
Yes. Okay, we have a light agenda this month. First on the agenda is approval of minutes for April 19th, 2023. Any comments or corrections?
By me, I make a motion we approve them as written unless John has something?
Uh, no, although I did notice, I know that meeting was fast, but it says we convened at 6:32 and we adjourned at 6:35. Did we, did we really make it in three minutes?
Well, this says, my copy says 6:35.
Yeah.
But we started at 6:32, so.
We started at 6:32.
It's a new record.
That could be a record because the previous record was four minutes.
I think we should give it to Keith and see if Bob.
For those keeping score, that's.
See if Bob can do better sometime.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the challenge.
That's going to be there with Luke Eric, I think. I don't think anybody's going to pass that one.
Okay, so do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Rob?
Member Moberly?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Podliska?
Yes.
Chairman Neiman?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Giltner?
Yes. Next on the agenda is approval, final decision, finding the fact. We don't have any receipt of appearances. Uh, there's no public hearing. Uh, received request, most pleading is request to make public comment of a general nature. No one here for that. Uh, so next on the agenda is the pre-hearing and agenda setting for V dash zero two dash 23 for 100 South Garfield. Gary, you said you have some general comments you want to make?
You can do this. No, we don't have to swear in for this. We don't have to swear in for this, or do we?
Not for, not for the.
Never mind. I told him we're supposed to use this mic. Um, so my name is Kerry Leonard. I'm owner's rep for school district 181. Mike Dubin, the director of facilities, uh, could not be here tonight. He had planned on it, but something came up and he was unable to make it. So I hope that you've had an opportunity to go through the packet. I have a few slides that I'd like to run through and then have the opportunity to listen to you and any comments that you have to help us as we get ready for the, the next step here. So, um, I'm not going to read all these slides here, but obviously when the facility was built, there were so overarching goals about a welcoming and safe environment, access, managing access to the site, which is very important for schools, public schools, and, and a safe building and, and, and a site. And so we took this package to the plan commission since it involved signs, signage mostly there being the subject matter experts. And we went through that process initially on May 10th and then a subsequent follow-up meeting on June 9th where we had made some changes in response to comments from the commissioners there. Um, and we did receive unanimous approval. And so this request that you're seeing is, includes all of those changes and discussion that was held at those meetings. And I'm going to highlight a couple of the changes because if you had an opportunity to go by the building, as you know, this signage is up. I'll get into that in a, in a second, but, um, we want to just talk a little bit about what's different than what you see right now. So all lettering will be mounted below a height of 20 feet. Uh, and that means that the signage that's on the east side of Garfield, the Hinsdale Middle School pin lettering will come down. Uh, the top of the blue ribbon emblem that's there is proposed to move down uh, from a height of thirty, 42 foot eight to 39 foot. The light that's on that because the lettering is gone, uh, it's a 24 foot light bar. We're going to deactivate and have only eight foot of lighting, uh, because we just, that light no, no longer has to illuminate the full signage. It just has to illuminate the blue ribbon emblem. Uh, and then also the lighting operation will be controlled by a com, time clock.
I interrupted already. I apologize.
Nope, please do.
The previous slide, it says the reason we're doing all this is the last point includes some changes to current existing. What, what's changed since the school was built? Because everything I'm seeing is like, I'm not, I don't want to knock you off your, knock you off your stride, but the, 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 the blue ribbon thing is new.
That will occur. These are the changes that will occur to the existing conditions.
But what's driving the changes? What's changed on the ground?
The plan commission review comments and their discussion on the appropriate signage in their opinion. And we concurred with the results of that discussion back and forth. So we had came in with the proposals for maintaining the signage the way it is. Uh, specifically the Hinsdale Middle School lettering that's on Garfield Street. Um, they felt that that was too high and shouldn't be up there on, on the, that face of the building. So that is what is being changed and we're relocating it.
I think what Gary's asking is why did, why does any of this need to be done?
We built the school three years ago. It's a brand new school. Did there, and then there, why are we changing the signs?
Is that the parking, parking deck?
So, so, um, in the, the school's original zoning application was submitted in late 2016, December of 2016, and it was approved in early 2017. In August of 2016, there was a new state law that was passed that made public school districts subject to local zoning jurisdiction. Previous to that, some would have said it was gray. Someone said they would not have been required. So most schools did not go through that. Um, I suspect because this was a new situation at the time, when the signage that was shown on the plans before plan, uh, plan commission and before the zoning board, um, there was no specific sign permit application made and there was no review and approval of the signage. So the school was built, the signage was built on the school as shown on the plans. And then uh, the other factor is the parking deck construction, which changed how access to the building was going to be made. And so some of the signage now needs to be the monument sign that is not a zoning issue, but is something we want to put up, um, is to help identify the entry to the school. So we're trying to correct an existing condition because previous approvals had not been obtained. And two, because of the parking deck, we're trying to add some elements to the, to the school to help facilitate access and, and just, uh, people know where to go in the school.
So physically, the biggest thing is the change is the parking deck. We kind of knew about, but it wasn't really there when, when we got the old school down.
The stuff that's there is there. It's been there since the school, uh, was built, but it didn't go through the approval process. We're trying to correct that situation now.
Okay. Parking decks made it more confusing about how you, where you enter the school.
Yes, it has.
Okay.
As to sign one, the picture that we have in, in our materials, is that the way it looks now? Or is that a rendering of how you, you want it to look if we approve it?
So.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at the, the Hinsdale Middle School language is what I was looking at.
Okay. Which, I'm sorry.
Is that not, is that not?
Further south, the further south.
Okay.
Just says Hinsdale Middle School over the influence.
Uh, I am sorry. I know what you're, you're, so you're talking about this one here, sign five?
Sign number one.
Sign one.
So sign one is at the south entry to the school. It's there now. It says Hinsdale Middle School and it will remain there.
Okay. And, and what are we, are we changing that somehow?
So, so, okay. There, we are here because there are a number of variances that need to be approved. Number one is we have more signs than are allowed by the code for a building. Number two is the total square, square footage area of the signage is greater than allowed. So all of these signs contribute to the number of signs and the square foot area.
But it, but if you get the variance you're asking for, it's not going to require taking down these signs or changing them in any way, correct? It will approve what's there.
Sign one will not change. Sign two, three, and four will not change. Where it says signs six and seven on Garfield Street, we will be making a change. And sign five is a relocated piece of what had been at signs six and seven.
Oh, that's really helpful. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That makes a lot more sense.
I'm glad you asked the question because, uh, so let me just, this may help. Um, so this is a proposed picture of Garfield Street. Right now, the blue ribbon emblem is up a little bit higher and Hinsdale Middle School in pin lettering is below it. That's what exists there today. The flag pole does not exist there today and the monument sign does not exist there today. So we want to add the monument sign, which is compliant. The flag pole is compliant. The flag size needs a variance, okay? But those elements of the blue ribbon emblem, the flag pole and the monument sign, we feel Garfield Street provides good signage, high and low, to identify that as the entry to the school. So that's, this show is proposed. And, and then the other change to what you see out there today is that we're taking, we're proposing to take that Hinsdale Middle School lettering that's up on Garfield now and relocate it so that it is on the gymnasium wall off the Washington Street parking lot by the other entrance to the parking deck. So there's an entrance to the parking deck off the Washington Street parking lot. This will allow us to put a signage by that, um, entry. Again, further helping to identify how people get to parking because once you park, they need to get in the building. And, uh, this is now again below the 20 foot limit from a code perspective. So this, this, what we've now done with the changes recommended in the, and in the discussions with the plan commission is lowered all the pin lettering signage so that the only element now that is, needs a variance because of height is the blue ribbon emblem.
We're not taking existing signs and making them smaller. You're just, the proposed signs are being smaller based on input from the plan commission.
Right, we're, we're.
So we're not like rebuilding signs?
We're not, no. We're, this is, we're relocating one sign from where it is now.
So that, is that like visible off of Washington? Is that the idea? So the opposite side entry for the parking deck?
Correct. Yeah, we, we debated a lot about, you know, is it in the middle? Is it on the right? Is far left? We consulted with the building architect. We consulted with the district's architect. And the consensus really is that over at that point, it draws people to the entry and lets you know that that's where you're going to go up the ramp to get to that upper level of the parking deck. And it is visible from Washington. So I wanted to just highlight the differences in what's proposed from what's out there now. And that's what this Garfield Street image is, and that's what this image is showing those changes. So, um, obviously, you know, the school's been there. There's been a school on that site, um, since before 1900. Um, it seems like the school gets built on one side, rebuilt on the other side, and it moves back and forth. Um, it really is part of downtown. It is, uh, has the parking deck, which is jointly used by the village and the school district. It's significantly larger, uh, and you can see that from this image and some of the other images than any other building around it. And it has street frontage on three sides. And from a street frontage point of view, the building itself has almost a thousand lineal feet of street frontage. And here you just see a close-up view, especially of the south. And because the bus drop-off is in the south, and because of how that entry is recessed in that south entry, that's not the main entry to the school. And when you Google it, you either get taken to this entry, if you do, um, uh, Hinsdale Middle School, or you get taken to, um, the center of the site if you Google 100 South Garfield.
So this is for, this is for buses?
This is where the buses drop off now.
Can that not be corrected?
On Google?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, people have tried, um, a lot of different times. Um, the school, I don't know if the school district has tried. I don't know if it just takes them some time to catch up.
The work, do parents have a circle drive to pick up and drop? Or is that just a long street?
No, the parent, the parent drop off and pickup is off the parking deck.
Okay.
So, um, this is that, uh, an aerial view. You see the two entrances, the parking deck. The big goal here is to get people to that north door off the parking deck because that north door is the main entry to the building from a security perspective. That's where people have to be buzzed in. That's where they have to be badge to get into the rest of the building.
The south entrance doesn't have, it's, it's locked all the time?
It is locked all the time. Uh, the vestibule is open. Deliveries can be dropped off in there because it's convenient for the delivery trucks to pull up into the drive. There is a, uh, intercom communication from there where people are not buzzed in from there. They would have, they can be told to go back.
Kids go out that way?
Kids go out, kids.
But they just, but they just can't go back in?
Correct. Those doors are locked.
That's what I thought. Yep.
Morning, in the morning, when kids are let in, the doors are unlocked and people come in different doors. Uh, and this just gives you an idea of that. So on that south side, there's actually five doors on the south side of the building. There's six doors on the west side, two doors off the parking deck and two doors off of the east side, the Garfield Street side. Um, and this also, uh, there's a couple overhead doors and service entries, uh, on the, on the west side as well. So those, those elevations are pretty close to the street. They all look, um, similar, although there is a hierarchy in how the doors were designed. Um, also the gymnasium and the cafeteria on the first floor are areas where public needs to come into the building after school hours for events and activities. A lot of different types of activities in the gym and, and that entrance right off the gym, uh, from, uh, the parking deck, um, allows people who are parking there to just go right in that door. And, and again, another reason to kind of signage for that door. Uh, so these are those, those signages, uh, signs and numbered the one through, uh, five and then six and seven is the emblem and, and the monument sign. The, as I mentioned, the monument sign is compliant, so there's, uh, there are no variances being requested on that. And with the, with the plan commission's final approval of that, that's actually can proceed. But we don't want to wait and do everything at once. Um, I think the architect did a nice job in the design of the signage.
Were there any dissenting views with the plan commission? Was this unanimous on their part?
It was unanimous approval. Um, and there were, there was some, there was a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
But, uh, no, ultimately it was unanimous approval. So, uh, this pin lettering that either says Hinsdale Middle School or Gymnasium, none of those signs are lit. Um, the only lighting is on the monument sign and on the blue ribbon emblem. Um, there is a, a great deal of design effort that was put into the doors and the different doors to help recognize what's a main door and what's maybe a subdoor. I can go into that, but I, I have those slides, but I, that was, we did that at the plan commission. Um, again, so here's what that, uh, proposed entry is going to look like. Um, and, and really it's, it's that combination. So that if somebody's driving along, they can see the Hinsdale Middle School monument sign. If they're down coming out of town or they're further back at the stop sign at third, they see the flag, they see the blue ribbon emblem. It's hitting them both high and low to really get people to come to, uh, that entry. I want to make one note. Um, as part of the previous approvals for the building back in 2017, a second flag pole was requested to be added and that was supposed to be at the south door. As part of the intergovernmental agreement for the building of the parking deck, the village was supposed to install that pole, that flag pole at the south door. For structural reasons, the village could not install it. So as, you know, we bought the flag pole sitting in storage at the school. Um, and since it can't be installed on the parking deck, which is where it was supposed to be, uh, through previous approvals, uh, that kind of gave us the opportunity to rethink, you know, how do we get people into this door? And so that's the monument sign, the flag pole, the blue ribbon emblem. All those things kind of came together, um, at, at this point. And it really, this initial idea came about at a construction meeting, um, on the parking deck, uh, when, when that was going on.
And that sign is, I mean, if you look at this picture, it's been, this is a rendering. You look at this picture, it says, it's in there as a square, so it's not got perspective. It looks like it's on an angle, but it's not.
No, no, that's.
Square with the world.
Correct. It's, it's actually a, um, circular element, but the, um, uh, so from a zoning perspective, you calculate the area by the entire square. So I think it's like 18.8, but it's, it's a few square feet smaller, like three or four square feet, actually physically smaller, but from a calculation point of view, it's, it's calculated as a square.
Yeah. Okay.
So yeah, in this particular image, um, you know, the, the, this was actually on a photograph. So the, uh, blue ribbon emblem had actually, has been dropped down by rendering and then the pole and the, uh, monument sign had been added by rendering, but this is.
Right.
So just a little bit, you know, the blue ribbon, uh, emblem. Actually, the, uh, first full paragraph about Hinsdale Middle School on their website talks about the blue ribbon emblem. And this is really a significant recognition, um, from the Department of Education. So, uh, it is something to be very, uh, proud of. And, um, you know, it is high, uh, higher in the building. We're asking for that as a, as a variation. Um, similar to, you can hardly read it here, but it says Hinsdale Middle School on this. I mean, it says, uh, Memorial Hall on, on, uh, this building right up over here. And that again, has the same kind of height that we're talking about. Um, obviously built before, um, the zoning ordinances wouldn't have allowed that. In the case of, of ours, that emblem is the exact same emblem that was relocated off the old middle school. So after they received that award, uh, uh, recognition in 2009, it was put up and we just relocated it to the building. Um, so, uh, but, but I think there's a character. These are two significant, um, civic buildings. There's nothing else like it. Um, you know, as I mentioned, schools come under separate zoning, so this isn't setting any precedence, uh, for anybody else because, um, they have a unique situation in, in Illinois statute. Um, so we're asking for, uh, to maybe simplify the variations. Basically, because of the lot and building size, uh, because of the three street frontages, because of the building use day and after school hours and the number and location of doors, this is number one. Variance number one is to increase the number of wall signs, permitted wall signs from two to six. And variation number two is to increase the maximum gross area permitted from 100 square feet to 114.7 square feet. And the 100 square foot, uh, I believe the way the calculation works in the zoning code is that like one lineal, one square foot for every, uh, lineal foot up to 100 max. So if this were just calculated or the formula, we'd be well within that number because of so much, uh, street frontage. So those, that's the, the zoning variations one and two. Three and four have to do with the, uh, blue ribbon emblem and they have to do with the size of the emblem, increasing the permitted, from the permitted size of, size of three square feet to 18.8 square feet and increasing the height from 20 feet to the top to 39 foot top. So it's, it's about that blue ribbon emblem. And then,
Could I, could I ask you something about that emblem?
Sure.
Uh, right now, if, it's basically, we're looking at like three sections there. It's in the upper third.
Yes.
What was the thinking as to why you couldn't put it in the middle third? And if you did, would it then be compliant?
Uh, the middle third would not be compliant. It would still be above the 20 foot level.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's actually 20 feet or below the sill of the second story windows and that.
But there are no windows, right?
Well, but the second story, that band that you see would be where the second story windows. So to be compliant from a height point of view, it would have to be below that buff band.
Okay.
Uh, the idea is that by having it up high, you could see it from a further distance and it would help to draw in recognition of, as it's lit at night, people are coming to the school. You see something like that, it helps identify it as a point of entry into the school.
Okay.
So combined with the flag and the emblem as the high elements, the monument sign as the low emblem, as the low element, they really work together.
It would seem that it would be hard to read that high, but, but it is, it's not.
You know, it's not so much about, well, that's partially why it's as big as it is, but.
It's to draw attention to that point.
You see that it's lit, you see something up there and it marks the door.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, during the day, you're walking by, you drive up, you see the blue ribbon emblem. You may or may not know what that means, um, but just as far as a marker to get people to the school.
I understand. Thank you.
Does that, um, does that blue marker exist currently anywhere on the outside of the facility?
It's there right now.
And it, what size is it now?
It's the same, it's this size.
Oh, it is. So you're not making it larger?
Not making it larger. And this was the emblem that was taken off the old building.
Got it.
It had existed, uh, if you remember the old building, it actually was at the.
I attended.
East corner by Garfield facing, uh, south. So it was right at, it was actually above the second floor windows. It was in the middle of the second floor at that point.
And is it, is that height now?
The, actually, the, this, we're going to lower it by about three feet from what it is now.
Okay.
The, um, so, so the emblem and then, uh, the flag size, flags are sized relative to the height of the pole. And the, um, or the zoning requirements in Hinsdale are for 20, 24 square foot flag. That would just look tiny up here. And it's actually, um, less than the required size that a school has to have by state law. The Flag Display Act, um, requires a, a, a sign not as big as the 96, but it requires a, a larger sized flag. So we can't meet the Flag Display Act and, uh, Hinsdale zoning ordinance at the same time. So a variance would have to be, you know.
The statute's for 32 feet though, right?
That, the, yes, that's the minimum. And then the reason this is bigger is because of the height, because of the size of the building. And these flag poles, it's, it's a big mistake. You see in a lot of public, big buildings, they put a small flag, flag pole there. And so the bigger the flag pole, really the bigger flag that you should have.
Yeah.
And I think the flag pole is appropriately sized. It's code compliant from a height perspective. Um, so it's not the flag pole, it's the flag size.
Will there be a stable Illinois flag? Cause sometimes they'll, you'll see those two together, just, just here.
Just flying the, um, US flag.
Well, but that's interesting though, that the, the pole itself is code compliant.
Yes.
But the code didn't reflect the proportionality that's in the chart that you gave?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's.
Or the flag display.
That's why we're here, I guess, is to address things like that.
So what did you base the size on? I see this chart, but what was, how did you arrive at that amount of size?
It was really, I mean, it's, it's the, the architect when they originally specified this, it was because it was appropriate for the size of the building. And I think if, if you drive by and you look at it during the day now, because we're actually lowering it at night, the school district is lowering it at night until we deal with some of those, uh, comments about the, uh, clanging.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, if you look at it though, I, it's, it, it's the appropriate size. And based on the, that chart that's in there, the flagpole height, it does have, it could be within that range.
What is the source of the chart? Where did, who did that?
Flag company.
The flag company?
It's a, it's a flag company. It, it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So the flag that's out there now is 96?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, um, and this is in two locations because there's this existing one here and the flag pole that's proposed. On the other side.
Okay.
So, um. It was good that we were able to.
Yeah, that was helpful.
I answered some questions, please, I'd like, um, the only last comment, I think, um, in talking to Rob, I understand there were some questions about, you know, have we provided sufficient information relative, uh, to, uh, this, um, not being a self-imposed? And, and so I will, we'll go back and we'll take a closer look at that.
Self-created, very, uh, standard.
Standard. So we'll go back and try to add something to that for the next meeting.
Um, so Bob, I just want to give you an opportunity to, uh, either ask a question. Hopefully you can hear everything.
Uh, um, yes, I have heard everything and I don't think I have any questions right now. Thank you.
Okay. So just a reminder that this is a recommendation to the village board. We don't have, uh, approval, outright approval for this. Um, and the, uh, the variances that are being requested right, right now, looks like for the most part, you use the same standards for all of them, sort of a copy paste?
Well, yeah, there's, there's slight differences because.
Yeah, for the flag.
The flag is different, but from the signage, it really is, you know, quite frankly, it's the signage as a package around the building that for all the same reasons, it has to do really with the size, the number of doors, uh, the amount of street frontage, um, and the different, uh, circulation patterns around the site.
Right. Okay. Um, and so that, I think that's fine. Uh, just, right. So for the public hearing, we typically will have the applicant go through each of the standards just at a high level, not to repeat everything that's in the, in the application. And then just also give an opportunity for any questions or concerns from, uh, the board. And, um, and then just for the board, we can decide to take these as a, as a group or separate them out. Um, that's sort of based on maybe any comments that we get through the public hearing. Um, so that was all I had.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Did you say the current flag that's out there now is the 96?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we can drive by and see what that looks like. Okay. Super.
Okay.
But before three o'clock, because that's when the custodians go home.
Got it.
So, or, you know, it's being lowered at that time.
Oh, and any, uh, comments or concerns from the neighbors for these variances?
Uh, no, not that we've heard. I know that, um, we did have a.
No, not that we've heard. I know that we did have a neighbor concerned about building lighting. I know that the, the district had, had many conversations with the neighbor in order to try and adjust some of the concerns, but nothing that I'm aware with respect to this request.
Okay, great.
The pole is gonna, the flagpole is gonna have lighting though, right? Or does it have lighting now?
The flagpole has lighting, it is an internal top light, so that it can stay up overnight. And as the flag kinda blows in the wind, it turns as well, so it stays lit. And it's lit right now.
And so if there was gonna be, if that was causing anybody, any neighbor a problem, they would have recognized that already.
Yeah, I've not heard any comments on the flagpole lighting.
It doesn't look like it shines out, it shines down.
It shines down, yes.
But, but you take the flag down at three o'clock?
Well, after the plan and commission, that was a recommendation of the plan commission. While we've got the district architect investigating, is there any other, anything else that could be done to the flag so it don't get as much clanging sound?
Uh-oh.
So, there, there are already some features on that flagpole. But I just got, I actually just got a report yesterday from the architect, and there's a couple other items that we just need to look into. If, if we can buy something from the manufacturer that reduces the noise, you know, we'll buy it and install it.
And Carrie, that neighbor did, was at plan commission, they specifically brought up the noise from the flagpole?
Yes.
What meeting, what, was that meeting, the plan commission, so I can go back and watch it?
It was last month.
Last month's plan commission?
There were two, but the, the one where they just talked about the changes, modifications, were in the last one.
He was at both meetings and.
Yeah.
And that's what prompted the district to make some of the changes that they're intending to make here? Was to try and reduce the asking.
The neighbor who's been at the plan commission meeting, he lives there, right across the street, at the corner of Third and Garfield. He is, he doesn't like the lights are on in the school at night, and the janitors are cleaning. There may be some issues with the ability of those to turn off, and Mike Dugan from the school district has a, actually has a contractor taking a look at that to see if there's any fine tuning that can be done to the control system. But all of that is code-compliant, it's just something that, being a neighbor across the street, he has complained about them day and night.
Did the old school not present the same problem?
Well, the old school was, wasn't as high, it had that mansored roof, if you remember, so, and it was set much further back.
Further south, yeah.
It was so much darker.
I don't think it had many windows, to be honest, that was not.
Yeah, no windows.
The gym was on the upper floor.
It was not a nice.
Everybody tried not to look at it.
Pretty dark. Yeah, the best thing they could do with that is keep it as low in the ground as possible and it's dark.
All right, any other questions before we wrap? Okay, all right.
Great, well, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, so, no, any new business? Any old business? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
Good job.
Okay, thank you, thanks Bob.